Here we can see the nature where the two of the family members are speaking. And what they were speaking each other.
Who are these two?
One is maamie and another is daughter-in-law. Now they both were speaking with each other.
Maamie asked, "Your son's name is?"
And mother-in-law is asking, "And what is thy name?"
In this message, "Your son's name is?"
And today's messages and what is the news?
"What is the message you hear?"
And what is the news that comes out of your mouth?
"What do you hear from others?"
And what are the news which is given by others?
"What do you hear from God's sake?"
And what are the news which is said in the presence of God regarding you?
"You must understand this in a proper manner." "A child of God and he must have a news."
And what is that message? "There must be good tidings in his mouth." And today we are hearing many kinds of news in the world.
News means and you can just hear about the world news and the church news. News, N-E-W-S. North, east, west, south.
And the news which comes from every direction is north, east, west and south. So when you read in the scripture and you can see some messages or delivered from heaven. Even from world, there are many news reaching to heaven. And every day an angel is reporting the news to heaven. And that's what the scripture says. At the same time, all the adversary enemies against you and they are giving the complaint news to the heaven. And the spirit accuses you day and night and he is telling that he has done this and that and is reporting to heaven. And suddenly the angel of God. And he will give the information and in this situation have done this and that regarding you and me. And what are the news which is given by you among the society and among you, among the people and in the church? And today's messages, what is your news? Either news is a evil news or a good news. And this is what we are going to meditate in the word of God. And today and what is the news that comes out of your mouth? And once by revival and you were telling many news. But when you face the conflicts and struggles, when you go on the contrary paths and what are the news or message comes out of your mouth? And some they tell the evil report as a good news. So one day and he called all the friends and daughter-in-law had a party. And what is that party? And mother-in-law died and that was the party on the day. And for her and that is a good news. And they beton against us and they are having some evil things and that becomes. And once said, "I have killed Saul" and he thought he brought a good news but here in the day he cried. In Old Testament as well as the Bible system and we can see in different manners and these kinds of news. And what are the news which is heard about you? And what are the news moving around the church concerning your children? And what they are telling about your family in the church? And what are the news about you in the society and among the family? And this is the right time to change all the good news about us and all the wrong experience about us and to change this and to make it this time. When you go to second Samuel. And David is telling that and he brought the news that Saul died as a good news to him. And he considered that he brought a good news to him. And this is what is said by David in second Samuel. And David and Saul they were compared to each other. And they are not able to mingle with each other. And Amalekate killed Saul. And his lord Saul and said that and brought the good tidings to him. And Saul died. So hearing that and he got a great tension. And when the enemies are coming down and you should not rejoice. And sometimes your family members may be your enemy. Even in the congregation and there may be enemies to you. And you should not feel joy when they fall. And Saul, David conducted because of his soul. And they were both like mongoose and sneak. And when he gets chance and he will kill him. But David cried for Saul. And that is a true token of a Christian. So check what is the news in you? And Jesus said, "And you will hear minis in the last times." And even when you are hearing the news and hear the news about the wars. And it is said in Matthew chapter twenty-four verse six, "And you shall hear the news about the wars in the last times." And the world has become a reshoring and the news are delivered and suddenly. So we are hearing many news like this. And when some hear these news and they make. And when they hear the death news and they make crime. First of all, let us see the evil reports. Even many have come with evil news. And my sickness was not. Yet my needs were not met. And yet the Lord was not working for me. Likewise and various kinds of news are delivered out of. And Satan will check and what kind of news is coming out of your mouth? And what God expects, what the king expects that and the good tidings must come out of your mouth. And before the people of Israel, they inherit cannon. And they sent twelve to spy out. And numbers chapter thirteen, it is representing that and ten came back and gave the evil report. And thirteen thirty-three of numbers, it is said that and they have given evil reports. And you can read in the Bible and what they have seen. And they did not exaggerate anything. Because when they went there and they see the sons of Anak. And they were Jinchangin figures. And they said that and they were grasshoppers before them and so they were so Jinchangin figures. So what they said it is true. But the Bible says and those are the words that come out of unbelie. At the same time and there are two people in that group. And what the ten said and the Lord made an account as an evil report. And but what other two said it was a good news. It is true, they are the sons of. But he who will overcome is innocent. And he that is innocent is greater than he that is in the world. And here in the words of those ten people and people started to lament and shout. Let us stay here it said. And we don't want such a cannon. And they discovered the people by telling such evil reports. So the Lord hated these words. And we can see numbers chapter thirteen verse thirty-three and they brought evil report and spread out these words. Fourteen thirty-six what it says. So they have said these evil words. So because of the evil report upon the land and died by the plague before the Lord. And see how the Lord is giving the punishment. Situations may be transgression or contrary to you but you must only believe or unbelieve, believe words must come out of your mouth. When you are reading, studying lessons in the school and we have learned writing letters, letter writing. And what they tell you? And they write and say, "I am a well here and you are fine there." And after the sentence admitted, I was so serious in cancer. Starting, how will it start? And the initiation will be. And only then later and they will tell the. And their own child died. And the own son died. And the girl, she did not inform to husband. It was not informed to his own father. And that certainly made the child to sleep in the bed of the prophet. And she sought after the prophet. When the prophet saw this. He asked. And he asked. And you say husband will? And the child which prayed and responded that it was well. And what will he answer? Why we need to go there and we will stay here, we will cry? If the child dies, will we keep it in the kibbutz, will we go there? And said it is well. And the child is died because and that is telling that and. And those words of faith and made the child to wake. And that is very important. And after coming to the spiritual life, the words that comes up your mouth and death and life is vested in the power of the tongue. And the sons of Anak that seen it is true of the ten members but all that we will report comes of your mouth, it is not true. In this morning time, even the situations may be contrary but the Lord is expecting a good words out of your mouth. And you will be here. And the Lord will perform. And the Lord make use of this Abraham, this own son. And with what journey they were traveling? And he is going to see the Disneyland. And to what purpose he was going? Is going to see the. He is going to sacrifice his own son. And he was taking his son with him. And when they cross the limit and they stop. Because the mount Oria was seen to his eyes. Now the father and son is moving towards. And so there is fire in the hands of the father and there is woods in the head of the son. And the son is asking. And you have five hands. And I have wood in my head. And where is the hand? And see what kind of question. If the son is asking such a question to father and what you will tell and you will be happy each other and you will depart the place. And he said, "The Lord who called me is Jehova Chai Rai." What does it mean? And we will see in how the mouth of the Lord and they will be seen to the Lord. Or the Lord will see after it. And so he made his heart like a stone in faith. And he was not shaken or moved. And he did not inform the wife. This is not happened suddenly or accidentally and this is three days of journey. And the Lord have given him three days of chance to give, consider and to turn back and the three days of time was given to him in the journey. So what will you do? And you will look to the sun? And you will. And you will tell him to move. And when the son may ask on why you are crying and tell me. Abraham became strong in faith and without any doubt in belief and he was moving in high tech manner. Even at that time, I was telling that and the Lord shall be seen. And why do you fear? And this is the beauty of faith. The consecration is beauty. And that is of a beauty and no makeup is of a beauty. Says if you wipe out, it may depart. But the consecration will come as a reward to you to heaven. And what is the news which comes? And what is the news about your son? When you look at the Genesis chapter thirty-four. And the brothers heard about news about Jana. And there was a great murder in that house. And the whole land was destroyed. Because the news that delivered out of the daughter is a very bad news. Dear parents and you have to analyze and check and what is the news about your son and daughter? And because of the somblings of this children and many parents have turned back. And because of the moving of this children and many families are turned away from the church. And what are the news about your children among the society and among the congregation? And son was telling to father and news about you as wrong news and he said that and you just mind your own business. Samuel chapter two verse twenty-four. And the news which I heard about you, this is not good. And he was teaching and instructing the sons but they were not hearing about him and they were not dependent. He was a priest. And he was able to stand before the church. And they were all his own son. And they were staying in the faith home instead. And they were taking up the ark. But what are the news about him? And for this no good report. And the father is telling of the sins my sin and for this no good report about here. And the Lord is expecting good report in your life. When you look into first Samuel. And one came and delivered a good. So hearing that news and the whole land started to shout. And what is the news? And the ark was cut off. And hopefully and Phinehas were slain. And hearing this news. And the Bible says and neither a conceived and neither a child. And when the children of the Lord heard the good news. So when she was daughter-in-law of this, so hearing the news and she was telling that and the ark was taken up and she bowed down and immediately and she was trembling and pain was came upon her. And you can see this in first Samuel chapter four verse nineteen. And even the husband died and was not grieved about it. And twenty-first verse is telling that the ark of the Lord was taken up. And only then the news was informed. And husband died. And third news is that and husband died. But she said the glory is departed from history. And see what a pathetic state. And the verse is telling that the child was delivered but she died. And what is the news about the child? And your children news about me be not a good report and before the judge news must repent. In the second chapter, the news was delivered that was not good, in the fourth chapter and there is the news and the both the sins were slain and destroyed. So if you want to see about this. And four seventeen of us Samuel and he who brought the messenger. The ark was taken. And hopefully and Phinehas were did. And the first the news will be delivered that you are not good, then after the news will be delivered that everything was ended up that you were destroyed. May the God's holy name be glorified. When we look into second Samuel. And chapter one verse four and he was asking and what is the news? And what was the news? And Jonathan died. So when hearing this and David could not contain. And looking unto him and David asked and what is the? And the son, Jonathan was dead. And David and Jonathan were close to each other. And so they were maintaining such a friendship and they were close to each other. And Jonathan will remove the garments and they went to wear it. And both cannot stay without them. And to such a close relationship they maintain. But now he released the news that he was dead. And he said that the passion among the women it is so greater than that and so you are select to me but you have gone now. But dear beloved sister. But what is your news today? You go to your house. And tomorrow you go to office. And the voice must come with you. And what is your news? And what is the news about you in the church? And what is the news considering you in the society? And what is the news considering you in the heaven? And God is happening to all these news. And you should not deliver evil report in the land. It was said as a prophecy in the Bible, a four killed and four were destroyed and the wars and this war terrorism were taking place and these all happen according to the scriptures says. Seven twenty-six of Ezekiel. And rumor upon rumor, it can come in the world but it should not come in you. And if anywhere may spread rumors or give the evil report but when you are good in the Lord and you will not be shaken or troubled. Psalm hundred and twelve. And what was seven is standing. Righteous will not be moved by hearing the evil tidings. And so there is no fear for the righteous. And he will never take burden. And today many good evil reports are said in the world. But whether any evil reports are coming about you? And once again I repeat. And our people a new weekend, we can help others and can help but you should not have it because it is. And if you do good and suffer and it will be pleasant to God. But when you are doing evil but when you are doing good but there is not good for you. Today what are the news is coming out of your mouth? Some are having the habit and they will never tell good report about anyone. And they will tell and Jesus is also met right. And he is telling he was not. And they that are doing commenting sins. And we are in the state to accuse even. And some of the habits is they will accuse and they will say fault about others. Is there anyone like you like this? If someone was getting the news. And I still know our sister died. At night she died. And they cannot keep the body for a long time. And this said that early in the morning and they must take it up. And one pastor said and if you are taking hurriedly and who will come? And how to inform to everyone? And how quickly we can inform to all? And one said in the time. You inform to the particular sister, it may be night or day and she will inform suddenly to everybody. May the God's holy name be glorified. After coming to the spiritual life. And you should not the one who spread the evil reports. Is there anyone who was found the sister found in sin? Is there any brother like this? Is there any sister like this? And they will keep telling something. And they want to build up some stories through their mouth about any. And kindly and you should not spread evil reports like those ten and you have to away all this brother and you have to tell only the good things. That's what the scripture says. And there may be lies. But you have to part these lies and you have to speak only truth. And you can read in Ephesians chapter four verse twenty-five. After coming to the spiritual life and you have to put away all your lying things. And what is our present news? And someone if they are getting the news and they will see there are any gain to them. And they will, after hearing the news and they will think whether they are getting anything. And only and they were received the news. And to whom? And she received the news. And she were holding peace. And it was informed to her that Adonijah became a king. And she could not contain anything. And she did not know what to do for them. Why? Because she was waiting for Solomon to become a king. But suddenly what news was delivered. And she got a news. And Adonijah became a king. Who informed? A prophet informed this. And neither this coming to create a problem. And he was having the. So when he was receiving the news that Adonijah became a king and she came to the fortress where that she posting. And she suddenly knocked. And do you know the matter? Adonijah became a king. And she did not know what to do. And she was telling the next man. We just call Solomon. You tell to the king and I will come from outside. And see what are the mysterious things we are doing and they have done. One. ஒன்னு ராஜாகள் ஒன்னு பதினொன்று.
And one eleven of us kings. அப்பூலுது நாத்தான் சாலமூனின் தாய்யகே பத்ஸேபாளை நூகி நம்முடைய ஆண்டவனாகிய தாவிதுக்கு தெரியாமல் ஆகிதின் குமார்நாகிய அதோனியா ராஜாவாகர செய்தியை நிகேட்கவில்லையா?
எவ்வளை போய் ஒரு அருமையான செய்தியைச் சொல்லித்தா?
And she went and informed the great news to her.
அதோனியா ராஜாவைட்டா?
That Annoji became a king.
நீ வந்து நீ உடனே போய் எல்லாத்தைக் கிளியர் பண்ணிட.
And you must go immediately and must care everything.
இன்னைக்கு அனேக ஆவிக்குறிய ஜனுடைய ஜனங்கள் இப்படிப்பட்ட செய்திகளைக் கேட்டு உடனே உடனே பிரச்சனைகளை உண்டு பண்ணக்கூடிய அனேகரைப் பார்க்கலா.
Even today we can see many spiritual people when they hear the news and they cause and confuse and many problems.
இன்னைக்கு உங்களுக்கு எப்படிப்பட்ட செய்திகள் எல்லா வருது நீங்க பாருங்க.
You check how many how sort of news are you receiving?
செய்தி கரக்டானு முதலா விசாரிக்கணும்.
Check and receive whether the news is per photo.
என்ன சில விச்வாசிகள் கொஞ்சம் பாதி கேட்டுட்டு இவனே அதுக்கு கண்ணு காது மூக்கு பச்சுகரிச்சு ஜீவ சுவாசத்தை ஊதிருவான் தப்பு.
Some believers and they are hearing the news and they will fetch these eyes and nose and everything and they will breathe at the living breath.
ஒரு சின்ன செய்தி இருக்கோ.
It may be a small news.
அதை உடனே இவனே கண்ணு மூக்குலா சிஸ்டிச் செவ்ச்சி அலாக ஜீவ சுவாசத்தை ஊதி பொம்மே நடக்கொடுவான் சபை முழுசு பேர கிடுத்து உட்டுப் பெடுவா.
And he will create or fetch up at these eyes and nose and he will spoil the whole name of the church.
நாரக்கொனத்தில் இருக்கும்போது.
When I was at Arakona.
போது சொல்லி கலபிட்டா பாஸ்ட் வந்து நாலு சிரோவா செத்துட்டார் அப்ப.
And one believer said that a pastor has saved four lakhs of money.
நான் அப்ப பிரதர.
I was brother.
பிரதர் நாலு சிரோவா செத்துட்டாரு.
And brother have saved four lakhs of money.
கலம்பிடுவாரு.
And he will depart.
என் நாலு சிரோவா கலம்பிருதுக்கா எல்லார் வந்துருக்காங்க. போர் லாக்ஸ் கிடச்ச எல்லாரும் கலம்பிருதுக்கா வந்துருக்க.
And for getting the four lakhs or they come to depart the place.
அது சென்று பாஸ்டு கேட்டு அபியா கலம்பிருவானா அபியா போச்சே நாலு சிரோவா.
And sent the pastor after hearing this news and thought that I may depart and the four lakhs money was lost.
அந்த நேரத்தில் எம் பெய்தோம்ல என்ன ஒரு பதினெழியாயிரோர் இருக்கும் பதினாலாயிரோர் இருக்குங்க.
At the time when my faithum I may have forty thousand to fifty thousand.
இப்படி எல்லாம் கலப்பியுட்டுவானுங்க புதுசு புதுசாக கலப்பியுட்டுவான் ஜீவ சுவாசத்தை ஊதுவான்.
And likewise and they may spread out the living breath and they may create some problems.
இப்படிப்பட்ட செய்திகளைல்லா நீங்க சொல்ற பளக்கத்தை உட்டுருவீங்கன்னா விச்வாசிகரே.
I believe that and you will forsake or leave all the matters of spreading this evil.
குறிப்பாக மற்றவர்கள் பிள்ளைகளைக் குறித்து பையங்களைக் குறித்து வாலிவ பிள்ளைகளைக் குறித்து யாரு எதுவும் பேசக்கூட.
And pointly about the young children of the girls and boys of the families and you should not speak about them.
மற்றவங்க குடும்ப கதைகளில தலையிடவே கூடாது.
And you should not put your heads in the other family matters.
And they praise God.
Kaye eduthu stotrammanu, kaygale kuupponu.
And you have hold hands and must praise him.
All that unmeana stotro.
And that is the true praising.
Adurum mayam, oru madhipukuriyay oru kariyam.
And that is the act of reverence.
Nehemia yeddu arla niga pathingana, avan janangal allarun thangal kaygale kuviithu amen, amen, amen andri sannar.
In book of Nehemiah, chapter eight verses, we can see, and they have hold their hands and they said amen and amen.
Ah, ninil sugasidhi visarikannu.
You have to inquire a good news.
Yeah, indhvara varle.
And why you do not come this week?
Then ongalu sohomileya.
And do you not keep in well?
Okay, naanga jebikirav.
And we will pray for you.
Ah, ongalu vitlav yaadiyave, yaadiyar karara varleya.
Ah, the husband is sick in the house and not come here.
Oru renduvaru koottu poyi namajebikala.
And you can go to and you can pray for them.
Yippudi, orutthurukorutthur sugasidhi visarikannu.
And so you have to ask the news to each other.
Kootta adiyamananala visari pillama namirukku kudada.
So when the crowd was increasing and there should not be without any inquiries.
Sohomar kingla, nallar kingla, avkakannu nama.
And you must ask, are you keeping well, are you fine?
Yaatravamo, padinettamadigara, elavasana thulabathingana, oru maamanaru maruma onu sandikranga.
In Exodus, chapter eighteen verse seven, we can see, and suddenly, and the daughter.
Yaare, Moses yuvade maamanu.
And father-in-law, there is Moses and this father-in-law.
Vaas inga.
Appuluthu boosey, ten maamanukke edirkondu poi, avani vanenge muttam seidhan, oruvaru oruvaru sugasidhi visari thukondu, kodarathakal privesitarkal.
Engyaavu, maaman, maruma boyu maamanaraya, ipomutthu kudukranga?
So is there any, father-in-law, going to see, and suddenly?
Oru vela kalyana variki, uncle, uncle, maka, akari ayirjina, ipra uncle, uncle avayarukkumada.
Until the day of marriage, and then we call uncle, but after the matter prosper, and they will not call him.
Mosay, ten maamanukke edirkondu poi, avani vanenge, avanukku muttam seidhan, oruvaru oruvaru sugasidhi visari thukondarkal.
And so we can see, and Moses went out to meet father-in-law, their business, and kissed each other, and they were asking to each other of their welfare.
Naan tanjavarulandhu oru familya pathu peshne.
So I went and speak up to the families in Tanju.
Ah, andabaiyam solrav.
And the Moses said.
Naanavna keta.
I asked him.
Eba, Mosay maamanar, Moses vendu, Moses yuvamaananaru, yavlo krosa andhruganga.
And Moses and father-in-law, how they were close to each other?
Niyapriyirukkavadiyana.
And can't, can't you be like this?
Avapatakkun sana, Mosay maamanaru, mari, enga maamanaru irundak paravala, indhalavriyil diyantaa.
If my uncle is like the father in Moses, and he'd be good, but he's not like this.
Anavari chethu pona parugge, adakthukku pogala, madhriyala vendidiyanta alurav. Ayoh, poittare, endasolaveli, ene pakkaveli, andal kadaisvarikku opparavagunune sinthavali alurav. Naanjana, onak, uiroda rukkunukka varle, chethu pona onukka pidiyaro.
At his death, and he was asking that he was not able to reconcile with him, and you are alive at his death, and how he will get that soon?
Ah, ongalu kapiyirukka.
So how you?
Ninga orutthur sugasidhi visarikkingla.
Are you keeping welfare to each other?
Adiyavam, naapati muna madigara, yavati elavasana thulayosep, andha takappan sohomayarukkara, abhini visarikara.
In Genesis, chapter forty-three, verse twenty-seven, and was asking whether father-in-law keeping well?
Indi ketnavarabhi visarikaram.
And how many are inquiring like this?
Ah, orisalar visarichaa, ningasomarikringla, somarthaarka, naachethu ponnun bakkriyama.
And if someone is asking, are you keeping well, and Phil, uh, won't be killed?
Then, renduvaru kedeerupudrumarupanga, indha vaartivatavara kattanthu, analladarupana, settaa beduva abhima.
And they will be contrary to each other, and they will tell that I am well, do you want me to?
Joseph poi, tenude sagodharanude sugasidhiye, arindukulumudiyaga pona, avan saapadlan duittupayirukka, palkatti laangoduupayirukka. Idavangi kitte, saaptukite, yaradukuluputtanga, kulilukuluputtanga.
Joseph went to inquire his brothers, and was taking all the prevent to them, but we hearing all these, and taking all these things, and they put him in the pit.
Orisalar kapiyadi.
And someone, how?
Soonelagillatangalakayavitthavare visarikamata.
And they will not ask further, in the first second, at the situations.
Tavare.
It is wrong.
Yellarinivisarikannu.
And you have to inquire everyone.
Iba kootta modinjalani, andapana karanallam, pana karanallam, bhatta, hi, praise the Lord, hi, abhina larki, ivriyapoy, kara kara apoyirukkada, paav yala patta allavavu, avan enga bava?
At the end of the meeting.
Aduvaru tani kootta, ivriyadaniya, abhiri kinkabirda, nallar kingla, ivriyabov. Enda kootta paravam onundrala, adham prashana.
At the end of the meeting, all the rich, they will inquire each other, and who they go on some other way, and I don't know which group will be taken up to heaven.
Thavide, oru group oodu chendu yuttathukku pogar.
And they were joined with the group and entered a battle.
Oru kurikappadavare kivandavode.
So when he came to the particular point.
Oru group viddaitthu poivittan.
And one group waxed away, faint.
Avangala mudila.
And they could not go further.
Avangasannanga, engalala mudila.
And they said, we cannot go further.
Continua prayanamanamudila.
And we are not able to journey.
Continua yuttamamanamudila.
So we cannot battle?
Apa Thavise sana, ningavaitpanu.
And David said, please wait.
Naam poran suli, irukkara janathodu poidu.
And he said that I'll call them around the people with him.
Irukkara janathodu angapoy, yuttathulajayang kadasish.
And given the people, bidha with him, and he compared the battle.
Ah, iba tirimbi varav.
Now he came back.
Tirimbi vandavodane.
When he came back.
Yuvan era yaradadi ponnandhirima?
You know whom he sought after?
Viddaitthu, varamudiyama, tadumarittavana poikadu, abhiri kesa, somarikya, abhini dambeesma.
And one who waxed faint and not able to come to the battle, he inquired him, are you keeping well?
Apaunko, jeychunga, ennu sannaga?
And they that inquire what they said.
Avanengavare.
They did not come.
Avanalku onnume kudukku kuda.
You should not give anything to them.
Avangal visarikavakuda.
And you should not inquire them.
Thavise sana tavare.
And David said, it is wrong.
Ivalu nera yuttathulavandariyaare, avantha vandha.
Until then, who have came, and they came.
Belavinappattavunade maamanaray, belavinappattavunade maamiyaray, belavinappattavun thayidavapunay, viddaitthu poivittarikal, belanattu poivittarikal, vasidi korandivittadandhu, nee visarikamal poivudakuda.
And they that are waxed, they that are faint, and they that are weak, and father-in-law, mother-in-law, father and mother, and you should not see the order of inquiring them and visiting them.
Onisam, onisamvail, muppadu yaruvatiyoonule, Thavide poi, viddaitthavare pathu sugasidhiye visarithaan.
And first Samuel, chapter thirty, verse twenty-one, we can see, and David went and inquired the people, they that waxed faint.
Avantha Thavide.
And he was David.
Avantha navishigambattavan.
And he was the anointed one.
Avantha devanade manushan.
And he was this man of.
Avantha devanade yudheythukketavan.
And he was the one who was able to see the God.
Avanpoi, avangalde sugasidhiye visarichaa.
And he went and inquired him.
Sabailaviya, yaadi pattangal visariga.
So you have to inquire the people.
Belavinappattavangal visariga.
And they that are weak, and you must inquire them.
Ah, viswasa thavutti thangana, velagi thukki erinchiradinga.
And you should not take away or throw them away, but they have gone away from the people.
Orutthur orutthur ningavisarikannu.
So you have to inquire each other.
Ah, nyai thirpey pati, matte yaruvatiyajani varitla, Yesu pesumuludhe.
So when the Lord is speaking about this, in Matthew, chapter twenty-four.
Valadu, valadu bokka, idadu bokka, rendu bokkate solukkara.
And was telling about the light thing, how the light shine, and that's like.
Onne sammariyadu, onne villadu.
And one is he, and another is God.
Abharendu koottati pati Yesu chollumuludhe.
And when the Lord speak about these two groups.
Naavyaadi pattan, ningavandu pakka.
And I will seek, but you not come and meet me.
Naavyaadi pattan, ningavandu pathinga.
And you are sick, but you came and visited me.
Ipar renduvaru ennu solranga?
And both the group, what they are telling?
Rendu groupu polumbudhe.
Both the group, telling.
Naavyaadi pattan, enne vandu pathingan sana, avangasannanga, naangge epo ongalavandu pathavu, abhingranga.
And was telling that, and we very sick, and when they came and meet you.
Innoru group solu, ningepo yaadi pattiinene, nigali teriyavederile, ningepo yaadi pattiin, Yesu epo yaadi pattadu.
And another group is telling, when Jesus became sick, and when we want to meet, in sense.
Apada Yesu thunari, indha siriyiril oruvaru yaadi pattukmodu patha, adenne pathamari.
And same time that Jesus said that, and they that told me, where you come and meet me, it was me, the meet unseen.
Ah, yarayadu visarikama, pakkamata, pesa mata, ennu irunda, innikindha prasangathukparukku poivisari.
And after this message, if someone is not inquiring to each other, after the sermon ends, you go to inquire them.
Ah, somarikkingla.
Are you keeping them?
Ongalukada helpthavaya?
Do you want any help?
Orarlics vaidupav.
And just go and get a.
Edavu, edavu fruits vaidupav.
Or purchase them, fruits.
Edavu onnu ni visari.
And you must inquire them.
Innikidevanade janangal visarippu korandudanala, daivika andu koranjirish.
And today the inquiry among the people of God was decreased, oh, the love of God was decreased.
Orisara pathavani ningavisarikannu.
If you see one person, you must inquire them.
Ningalalarkingla.
Are you keeping well?
Avanga dukkamara thaninga, dukkamarkinga, chollinga namajebikala.
And if they are sorrow, you must ask them, why you are grieving sorrow?
Odane, andukudumadu prikathukkula valibaniirukkada.
And you should not make problems or wait to separate the families.
Yana kporushan chariila.
My husband is not well.
Vitturunga, and this, andavna vitturunga, avan chari kudada, ningavitturunga, ivriyavun choli kudukkada.
And you should not counsel them, you leave him, I don't want to go on with him.
Manavi kelpadiamadakara.
My wife is not obeying.
Ah, thurthu vittre.
And you just sit away.
Monakvaise, innona kettikala.
And you have age, and you can marry other one.
Innona kettadala, yandarakala kalutthala kettara.
And you are not marrying other, you are making the mouths to come upon him.
Innon chariachana.
If you said correctly.
Pas, Prabhakar Narumiya, oru kalyanathra prasangamana.
And Pas Prabhakar preached well in a good marriage.
Namalaviva, parisuttha vivahamunadipav.
And we will publicly print that whole.
Vivaham, vivaham, yavarkulum, gana muladu.
And this marriage is an honorable honor.
Ah, vivaham grathu samaskrutha vaathay.
And this vivaham is a Sanskrit word.
Viva, abhina periyakalina.
And vivah means big stone.
Samaskruthal ennu, periyakal.
In Sanskrit, vivah means it is a big stone.
Hum, hum, adodu inaitthirukkara.
And hum means joining with it.
Ipa kalyana abhiri dherida?
So now, can you understand what is?
Advarikam free birda shuddhitundavu, iba periyakalani kattirukkada.
And he was flying.
Idi ilthukite, thanamathukumalay, oru kambukattu vitturav, odavamudiyadu, narakamudiyadu, adha, adhukthan chollav, olakathal, Tamilatla, kaalkattu, kaalkattu, kalutthala kattu.
And he was flying like a free bird, but now he was given a big stone for him, and he was just need the stone to try around the snake.
Vivaham.
It's vivaham.
Oru periyakalani kattirukkara, adha, naamanaviyasolunle porushanol, renduvaru janthajol.
I'm not telling a husband or wife, and they have given the stone.
Namadakayirukkada, adha, orutthur orutthur kalyanangattirikka.
And we are not tying any cords, but we are married to each other.
Ah, visari.
Was inquiring.
Orutthur orutthur visari.
Was inquiring each other.
Abhidiyirukkara?
How are you?
Indi yaravisarikannu kudada.
And now, no one was inquiring of us.
Manavi sohomala vittana, nallavala, padutthala, tholancha.
So when the wife is not feeling well, and let me say that, ah, okay, we waited.
Varumbodu, avan netthirundamari illa, illa kaalile pohumboodu illa, irundamari illa, na, enna nadandu, visharikannu.
So when she was not keeping well, and you had to ask her, and how you are, and you must inquire her.
Onisamvail, onnavadigaratla, ningapathingana, andaelkana vandu, manaviyata kaka, alakapesav, annalta, ensaapadadurukkara, onak, enna prashana, yantasol, edukupotun, ivriyaladukittukadukkara, vaas inga, onni yala.
Eighta vasana.
Eighta vasana.
Avan purushanake elkana, valipathu, annali, en alukkara, en saapadadurukkara, en sanjala padukkara, patthukumara.
Ippidi orunnal vandu, devan yonata kattar.
And like, why you said the Lord asked like the Jonah?
Enna kattar?
What he asked?
Ha, yonave, ni erichala iruppu, nalado, chaagaravare kairichala arken, nalado, poyan soltan.
And till anger, having anger is good, until my death, and it is good for me.
Naavaramata, navaramata, naavaavaanu koopaduradu, vandhingena, tirkashan, Jonah parugadu, nerevaru avadam, tadukkada, inevittuntha, naangge shuddhituppa, ipa vendidi erichala iruppu, nalado, sahugavare erichala arukkada, ennu, nalado, poitavangansol.
And he was telling that, and Lord was asking me, does thou will to be angry, and he said that, it is better for me to die than to live.
Adhamey porushavandukkada, saaptiyana, naan saapadran, saapadamarka, onak, enna vala, abhimaga, ippidi pattan, yonakal, irukkiringan, solrak.
So when the husband is asking whether you ate, and he may tell that it is good for me to eat or not to eat, and such journals are here.
Orisalar visarikannu kudada.
But some are not inquiring of us.
Yavvisari chenna kadichiruvan suli, visarikannu kudada.
Because when some are inquiring them, they may bite, and so they've not.
Daivusayidu, ongalde sugasidhiye daivam visarikke varumbukkara.
Kindly, and the Lord want to inquire your good news.
Enna nadandu dherima?
You know what happened?
Overunnalum morthagai, kanni mada tinvasala vandanipa.
And every day, the mudikai will come and stand near the courts of women.
Avanike yaradeyayidhi dherino?
And whose news is needed?
Yaradeyayidhi dherino, Estherudeyayidhi dherino.
And he must be informed, the news of Esther.
Aduvolesarva valamilla devan, overunnalum parlavathulandhu, yarangi, edendodathal, ulavuar, avarkyarade sugasidhi dherino, tanude saalimbadiyin, tanude ruvathimbadiyuru akappattam, manidhanudaya, sugasidhi dheridukkavada.
And likewise, and Almighty God, he will come to who, where, on the Eden garden, to hear the news about him, that created of his own like, major likeness, and he must hear the good news about them.
Esther rendu padinettamadigara, daily vandruva, andhadakavandruva.
And two eleven of Esther, they saying that, and he will come to the court of women, you mean?
Nanvalathapilla ivriyiruke.
And how the women were sedumay?
Rajastriya ayirvala.
And will become a queen?
Sutthiripavu olukothukicha.
And all the purification is good for her?
Sohomarukkala.
Is she keeping well?
Ava ivriyadu raja, rajastriya marirvala.
And somehow, he will become a queen or not?
Idu tha engalude asa.
And whose desire it was?
Yookkar, yelumbu, kayavayithu, ivriwa, apriwa, thungada, ay, buin, naangavarathukkala, ivriyadu, niyara, mathirno, manavatia, mathirno, adhamae.
And sits, stands, don't sleep, and we are telling all these things, because someone, you have to change your pride.
Adha, engalude targetadu.
And that is one of the targets.
Adhukthan, naanga apachalathal operation manav.
And so that's what we are making some surgeries.
Chalarkal, chalarkal, and the blue marandhu, oodi vitturav.
And sometimes, and we be apply the blue ointment.
Chalarkal, chalarkal, dingjeridipav, konjuchooda kalapo.
And for some, maybe we'll make a tincture.
Chavapodumuludhe, naanga, Esrevalil, ranavaithenakavu, operation banav.
And sometimes, and we will come as surgeon, or to like a physician, will come as we got this.
Engalude nokkana?
And what is our purpose?
Operation is successagano, passionthu uiroda erkav.
Then operation must be success, and the patient must come alive.
Ni viswasiavu erkavu, manavatiaavu maru.
You must be a believer and become a bride.
Idu tha engalude target, var, indha targetame, kadeyakada.
And this is our target, and we don't have any other targets.
Naorunadu oru sabailasone.
And one day, I said in a conversation.
Yapa oru rendu, muna masayarume, tasama kudukkadi, vitturunga, naanga waltrama, inallarukraman, paru, naanga, idanambi, ennusiradu la, irukkada la, naanga ahaayuthu paravigal, aduvaadukke, onnu setthavikavanta, ana naranjikittairuk.
And one month, you don't give us time to check whether we are living or not living, and if we are the clouds of the air, we don't want to gather or save anything, but the Lord is there to fulfill this.
Namakelarka, ayoh, vali adanjirse, vali adanjirse, ennu rembu dukkamradu, andorude concept abhiri dherima, oruvali adipar, adu tharakaradu, enna vali? Tapuniyeluvaliyatharamdharu.
And what we are feeling, the Lord is shutting the ways, and what is the concept?
Abhavane oru door.
Devan.
Oru dooram, moodrarana, katthar, onak, enna seyaboranartha? Leeluya, etnavali tharakabharare, eluvali tharakabharare, adhukthan onna adachirukkara.
If the Lord shuts one way, he is over it, open the seven ways, and that's what the law purpose of the law would call you.
Adhavathan, adikiriprasangamantradu.
So often, I used to preach like this.
Naorukalathal yoscha.
And what time I have think.
Uliyamunku ivlothavaya, ivlothavaliyekanamalayoscha.
And thought that, and we have to spend this much of a month for them.
Adhuktharukkada yoscha.
And then after I consider.
Yana kivlothavakoodu, avlothavasirova, yarukvaro, janathukvaro.
So when my needs are increasing, and that kind of blessings will come to the people.
Adu oru, pudhu oru concept, naapudiparchikada.
Then after, I learned this new concept.
Ipa yana kora anji kodi venam.
I need five crores.
Indha, dalchumarunna, indhi chippapodukkavu, edukanki kodi, ningakakala.
And we tell that, and he was having this uniform, why his need of five crores?
Indhalukku onnume kudada, backgroundade kudada.
And no background for him?
Single mane.
A single man?
Yavrgalakanki kodi me.
And why his need of this five crores?
Abhdiyala, naanjebikittukkada, enga sisters, thalani, kettikana, dherio, evlothu, ha, ayimbu kodi, kinaanjebikittukkara.
And if you ask sisters, and we tell that, and they, I am, you know, fifty crores.
Ningelarka, ongalakal, thalasutthirundhal, edhupir, paraasa vudichitana.
And you may think that I got the.
Abhdiyala.
It's not like this.
Overadathliyum, overadangal, vedu, fathum, palakariyinkalukke, thavapadu.
So enable places, enable branches, for the lands, and for areas, and houses, and they are need of this money.
Ipa yana kanki kodi thava.
Now I am need of five crores.
Ipa naandavraya, yana kanki kodi thanga, anji kodi thanga, anji kodi thanga, ongalakal, solamudiyadu.
So I cannot inform to you all, I must ask unto God, give me five crores.
Ipa prasangathukkara, ningadha, porunjikita, tapapurunjikari.
And please don't mistake me, just I, for preaching, I'm telling.
Ana yana kanki kodi thava, naanjebikittayirukka.
I am a need of five crores, I pray for it.
Yabri kudupara?
How he will give?
Yabri kudupara? Siyampe dikasalandhu, orutthavandukkudupiravana? Saiyampe dikasalandhu, orutthukudupiravana?
Will anyone come from the Saiyampe dikasal?
Ilalutran churchillandhu, orutthavandukkudupiravana?
Or from in Lutran church, will he give the money?
Yangarandhu kudupav.
From where he will give?
Ipa yana kandhu five crores thava.
I am a need of five crores now.
Naanjebikittayirukka, andavraya thanga, andavraya thanga, andavraya thanga.
I'm praying, Lord, give me, and give me this one.
Andorude concept, ennu dherima?
And you know what is the concept of the law?
Yana kindha anji kodi vayanunna, indha konavattham sabailavula viswasiyala blessing, blesspanav.
If I need five crores, and the Lord have to bless the members of this Konavattham church.
Ipa yellaargan chendu, ambodu kodi kadekannu.
And altogether, we'll get fifty crores.
Ipa ambodu kodi kadech, niyala unmea arundada, adu veda prashana, adhurandava solrak.
And that is the next problem, will your faith will, I mean, the research, the fifty crores?
Ipa ambodu kodi onakukadech.
When you get the fifty crores?
Ni vandu tasavagathu, olungavakuduthavai, naanjebikittukkara, yamprayer, enasiidhe, successagadu, idu, ni kadechavu, idhodu, jora, odiyupuitu, Yesu, andavraye, pathukuduthadu, inimengittingitadu, poira kudada, nee, neeska paytana, innortanakontavalo.
If you paid the tithes faithfully, and you're getting the money, and if you're going out, and the Lord will bring some other to the place.
Idu ennaavon?
And what will happen?
Yamprayer, innon lateav.
And my prayers.
Yana kiresearchavarkakal, latea idyar.
And we delay for the research to come.
Naam poradu poradvan, katthar solvaru, naam, ambodu kodi kuduthadamba, naa, yana kadekela, kadaisila pathavu, ulavu, renduvaru, karpaadukkada, ivan, kaasuthu, odiyupitaa, kaar, kadechadu, vedu, kadechadu, ellathu, eddala settlepenta, varline, settlepenta, nonne, oru pudhu viswasiyakondavu.
And there may be two black sheep among them, and they will not pay the tithes properly, so I will not be getting the rakmaavut, and the Lord will bring up the two stones as a new.
Indha concept, porunjavodane, naam, ambodu kodi kibaitan.
So after knowing this concept, and then I was shifting to the fifty crores.
Apa namasabailavula, center, kendra, ellathukichathu, ethanakodi varnau? Ayinakodi periyakariyama? Ayinakodi periyakariyama, pana varavare, oru, muna varu, vittlaraidu, buni, arunutijji kodi yedutha.
So last week, when they go for ride, and have three houses, and they have taken sixty four.
Mune, mune vera, ride bani, last week, tamilatla, ethanakodi yedutha, arunuttiyanki kodi, munuttiyankuthikilav, thangadutha, mune, mune, vittla, andha company isethu.
Six hundred and five crores.
Ni ivlo, veru, vandrikinga, andorasiro, vichak, kudukkada, daivane, nisiyav, kore, pichitukkada.
And the Lord who blesses here, and these many people are sitting here, if the Lord bless you, and he will tear the roof, and he will give them on.
Ana orayorukandisha, niyavunmea arukav.
But only one thing, you have to be faithful.
Ah, konjathla unmea arundha, unna anegatil, adhikariyana, anmat.
If you become very faithful in few things, and he will make you.
Unmude sugasidhiye devan visarikke, kanni mada tinvasala vandunikkara.
And the Lord is standing near the courts of women, and to hear the good report of you.
Unne thadi varuvaru.
He'll seek after you.
Ebedi yirukkara.
How you are?
Ah, ni somarukriya.
Are you keeping well?
Enthukkabharana.
And why you are grieving?
Oru sagodharan, bayangarav yaadiyandharu.
And one brother was so sick when he time.
Nightla vandu, katthar, nettila, thotu solrav, nee bappadaga.
At the night.
Naayirukkara, naayirukkara.
And the Lord said, but this is a forehead, I, I am with you.
Andhavore vaartila, onukshongkarches.
And within a single word, and he got healing.
Apa, ni somarukkada, devan, nisikrara, varumbukkara.
And the Lord desire about your healing.
Adha, unude sugasidhi.
And that is your good news.
Onre thurchedi, mattondru, unude sugasidhi.
And one is evil report, and another is good news.
Moonravade.
And thirdly.
Oru viswasi, uleyakara, vaile, othathamudikamududhe, nachchedi irukkavait.
A believer or servant of God, when they were saluting other, and they must come.
Adhene nachchedi.
And what is a good tidings?
Othathemudithen.
I have in my.
Viswastathay, kathukkada.
I kept my faith.
Idu nachchedi.
And this is good news.
Innikimudan, ningapalakariyinkalaka, kathirkig.
Even today, you are waiting for many matters.
Ah, ongalukku nachchedi, parlavathulandhu, devan, arukkara.
And the Lord is sending good news from heaven.
Naidimaligal, yaruvatiyanki, yaruvatiyanki.
Twenty-five, twenty-five of pros.
Tuera desatillirindu varum, nachchedi, viddaittha athmaavukkakadikkum, kulirindhatanirukkasaama.
Adhene tuera desav?
And which is a.
The worship. You are speaking like a holy water.
As cold waters to your thirsty soul is a good news from a hard country of heaven.
Twenty-five, thirty of prophets.
The eyes and the heart are filled with good words. A good word is spoken to the heart.
If a good word is spoken, our hearts are filled with good words.
When you get good reports and even that bones will become fat.
What is the news?
And what is the news comes out of your mouth?
In this religion, you are running. But what news you are getting in this way? What is the news?
And what is the news comes?
Sometimes, you are a good person. But you are speaking like a worshipper.
Perhaps you may be intelligent lover but what is the news that comes off of your mouth?
The kings of one. A son of a prince went.
The son of the priest ran after him.
A son of a prince went.
And the son of Abiathar, he came running.
Now, I asked him.
And he called, asked him what.
Adoniah said, you are a good person.
And Adonijah said that you are clever and what is the news?
He said, I am a good person. But Solomon, the king, is speaking.
And he said, I am mighty man, that's not matter but Solomon became a king now.
Forty-four. When he was speaking, a son of a prince came. He said, Adoniah, come. You are a good person.
How? He said, you are a good person.
And he said, come hear me and thou art a valiant man.
Forty-two.
Was forty-two.
Forty-two.
Hmm?
Forty-two.
That is what I said. You are a good person. You are giving a good word.
And thou art a valiant man, brings good tidings.
But he is a good person. What is the news? What is the news? Solomon, the king, is speaking. Everyone went away.
He is a mighty man but the king Solomon became a king and from that everyone fled over from him.
You are a good person.
You may be a valiant man and how is your news?
If you look at the other side.
When you see about this and another.
Let us look at Samuvel.
When you see in second Samuvel.
Absalom is talking about the king.
And there is about battles between Absalom and the king.
Yes, the king is in front.
And now the king is in front.
He is standing in the battlefield. He is going to the battle.
And when the war is going in front.
Ten thousand people are going to kill Absalom.
And ten together and join together and the bit Absalom.
Now, the news must be informed to king. Let us look at Samuvel.
You see in second Samuvel.
In the midlife, you can see this incident in chapter eighteen. Now, ten thousand people are going to kill him. Now, he came and said this. Shall I inform the king? Shall I run? Shall I go and inform the news? Yes, in the second verse, let us look at Samuvel. Forty-four, forty-five. Shall I give the good word?
Second Samuel, chapter eighteen, verse nineteen, he was asking, let me now run and bear the good tithes to me.
Now, he said. I don't have a good word.
And this is not good news.
No need. If you have a good word, what will you do? Tell the story.
And thou shall be good news another day.
Sit down and read the story.
And you read this when you go home.
He said, I will give the good word.
And he asked, let me now run and bear the king's tidings.
You should not give the good word.
And he said, and thou shall not bear tidings this day.
If you give the good word.
And thou shall bear tidings on another day.
I don't have a good word.
And this bad tidings is not good.
Absalom died. This is not the right news. You don't want. Stand. He called another one. He is an Ethiopian.
And he was an Ethiopian?
Black man.
And he was.
He said, you should not give the good word.
And he said, you go and inform the news.
He left.
And he left the place.
But he said, I will go. I will go. The children are tired. I will go. I will go. He looked at him. He said, go, go, run.
And so he wanted to let me go and let me go and said that you can you go on there.
He said, I will run. He said, I don't want to run. He said, I will run. But he said, second one. He is very fast.
And he went second and he was so speed and he bet him and you will have her.
I saw a running race.
And I saw a running race at the time.
Round.
It was a circle.
Run.
And they made all the small kids.
Every one came. You came first in the round.
And they have to end the circle and if you come there and you will be first.
All three, two, three, run.
And they tell one, two, three and they tap one to move.
All are going to the line. One person went like this.
So when we will cross the line, we will go on this way.
How? If you look at it, you are very happy. We were standing there. He went like this. He came. All of them are running. The children are crying. His mother came to the house and left. He is in the house. The Lord has blessed us.
May the God's holy name be glorified.
I am reading the Bible. What happened?
What happened there?
He said, I will run.
And now he wanted to run and he said, let me go.
He went to the front.
He ran and came front.
I like the subject very much.
I like the subject most so I am speaking so interestingly.
Now, he is running. He is looking at the rain.
And now from the gate and the watchman was looking at him.
He is sitting there.
And the David was standing near head.
He said, someone is running.
And he said, and one is running after him.
He said, looking, one is running. He said, looking, one is running. Someone is running. If one is running, you are a good person. That is the sentiment.
And that was sentiment of those times if one was running after, it will be a good news.
Let us look at it. Forty-four.
Was twenty-four.
Forty-five.
He said, I know her. He said, if she is running, she has a good word.
The king is giving a good word. The king is giving a good word.
Now the king is expecting good tidings and the king of kings is expecting during the rapture and he must get the good tidings from your mouth.
Then, he will give the good word.
And the other news is informed.
He is running.
And they tell, another result is coming.
Very fast.
And he is coming so fast.
When you see the vote, you will know like a king. They are saying correctly.
And they are coming after you can see and he was the son of Zadak.
He is the one. Go, go, go.
And he was the one who was making completion that she let me go.
Full speed.
And he was coming in full speed.
He said, who is it?
And the king asked, who is that? It is Agimass.
Agimass is a good person.
And Agimass is a good man.
You are a good person.
And you are having good name in the church and you must see, check whether you are having a good name in heaven.
Forty-seven.
Was twenty-seven.
I heard the rain. He is talking like a king. He said, I am a good person. He said, if he has a good word, he has a good word.
How? He came.
He came.
He stood there.
He came in the box.
He stood very fast.
And he came speed and he.
He was like a tiger.
And he fall face to the ground.
He was running.
And he saluted king.
The king asked, what is the news? What is the news? He is running. What is the news?
And he was grown and asked, what is the news?
He is very fast. He was very young.
So when I was.
How?
There was a great peril, I don't know what is the news.
Sit down and read the story.
You go and.
He was very happy.
So when I was talking there was a loud voice.
What is it?
But I don't know what is the news.
You are running. You are running.
Or you were running for this night?
The minister said, you are running.
In Galatians, he said that and he have run well and what if I happen like this?
He was running. He went very fast. He beat the previous one. He went correctly. But you have a good word. You have a good word.
You ran with high speed and you bet everyone they come after you but you are able to come now but no there is no news in your mouth.
The king is a good person.
Now, the king is telling that they is a valiant man and good man.
He said, you are running.
And that you have run became a win.
You are running.
You have removed the jewels.
You are taking them. You are taking them.
You tell the developing.
You are giving the good word.
And you have picked the.
You are telling everything in the Bible. You are running. What was said in the Bible, you followed everything but you are telling that there is nothing with you that you have run after this month. He will come.
The next.
He will come.
The one who was appointed, he came correctly.
Forty-one.
Was thirty-one.
One minute. He was very young. He was very young. He will stand.
He turned.
He said, if you are going, he will stand.
He will stand. He will not find it. He will not find it. He is running. He is running. All is wasted.
And you turned aside and said that you just stand still and what you have done, remove the jewels and all things become a waste because ask him to stay aside.
He is running.
And they that faced and patiently and perfectly have come now.
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one.
He said, I know her.
How? He said, I don't know. I don't know. He was very young. He was running. He said, I know her.
And he did not say that there was a great tumult and he said, oh, king, it was a good tidings.
He said, you are a good person.
And what word is coming out of your mouth?
You have a good word.
Is there good tidings in your mouth?
You have a good word.
Is there good news in your mouth?
You are a good person. You are a good person. But you are running.
And they will tell that you are a valiant man, you are strong man, you are so good man, but you are encouraging, but you know all these things and at the last moment you are showing, you stand aside.
Today, you are giving a good word.
So from here around little good news come off of your mouth.
What is the good tidings?
So what good tidings must come?
What is the good?
And what is the good?
Look, two hundred and fifty, Jesus is born.
And the good rings were telling and telling that Jesus was born and Jesus was born at the time.
This is a good word.
And this is the time, a day to spare.
In the year of the Lord, the apostles said, we should not be like this.
In second Chronicles, chapter seven, there is nine, we could link that and we should not keep silent and this is the day to proclaim the good tidings.
Tell the story.
And you must proclaim the.
Tell the story.
And the season will come and no going but you have to tell about Jesus.
Tell the story.
The place that you are working, you must tell about Jesus.
When you wake up, you are talking to the children.
When you sit, when you stand, when you sleep with your children, you have to keep whispering about the verses to your children.
You have a good word.
Let the good tidings come off of your mouth.
If you have a good word, you will give the worship.
When the good tidings come off your mouth and the good tidings will come.
He will call you.
And the Lord will call you, come, spirit and bride.
He will tell you. If you tell the. If you tell the story.
So when you are proclaiming good news and you will hear the good tidings and the trumpet sound.
Look, one hundred and fifty, a good word.
In one nineteen of Luke and the new use were given to Zachariah.
You have a child.
And you will get a child.
He is John Baptist. He is a great man.
And he will be high among all of his sons.
He is a great man.
And he will be with consecration.
He will tell you.
And let the glad news that you are still here.
You will tell your children.
And others must say that your children is with consecration.
You will tell your children.
And they must tell, your wife is praying well.
You will tell your children.
And they must tell, your children is praying and.
That is a good word.
And that is good tidings.
You should not give the good word.
And bad tidings should not come off to your children.
You are a good person.
And your children is praying well.
You are a good person.
And they are living for good.
That is a good word. You will have a good person.
And this is a news from heaven and you will get a child and he will grow divinely.
He said, what is the good news? The minister said, the worship.
And the Lord have discomfited the enemies.
Look, two hundred and fifty, Jesus is born.
And Luke twelve, ten, they said that and Jesus was born.
Look, eight, one. The worship of the Lord.
And Jesus proclaimed or preached the good tidings of the kingdom of heaven.
Let us look at Samuvel.
When you look unto sixteen, ten of Mark.
He is speaking.
And Jesus, it was informed, the good news that Jesus was resurrected.
Let us look at Samuvel.
Three, six of the Thessalonians.
They are speaking.
And the good news was said about the faith and love.
I have told you the seven kinds of good things. He is speaking.
And the good news about they were conquering the.
You will have a good person.
And the news and your child will grow divinely.
He is a good person.
And Jesus was born for us and that is a good report.
He is speaking.
And Jesus proclaimed or preached the good tidings of heaven as a news to the people.
He is a good person.
And Jesus was resurrected, this is a good report.
We are a good person.
And the good tidings that we are lovable to each other.
We are a good person.
And the good news that we are standing in faith.
If you have a good word.
Only when these good tidings spread around and our church or congregation will grow.
In Matthew, forty-four, thirty-five, this is a good word.
When you see in forty-three, five of Matthew and this good tidings start to spread around.
If you look at Samuvel. You will have a good word.
So when the others are caring about you and they must get the news and they have joined in this congregation, they are right and well and they have come with consecration and they were blessed and they become a friends.
She said, what is the news?
And mother-in-law is asking to daughter-in-law, what is your news?
She said.
And she is beautifully.
I will go to the church.
And today, and when do you feel?
I went to the church.
I saw.
I went to the church.
I went to the church.
It happened.
And these things happened to me.
I had a problem.
And my mates were met.
I had a problem.
And I go out, that's all, that's thanks.
He said, I will look after my matter. He said, what is the news?
And he said, all the news very clearly.
What is the news?
You went to this congregation, what is your news?
He said, what is the news?
If you ask someone, what will you answer?
After going to the congregation or church, I got the doctrines. Can you tell? I got the particles of the saints of the light. I got a prayer support. That is your good word.
This month, this must be your news.
It is not a thing.
At the end of the race and you must have a good.
Let us close our eyes. If you do not have a good word. You will go to the church.
And without good tidings and don't run in your race and a class and you may turn aside or stick aside.
Two minutes.
But two minutes, let us all close our eyes and better.
I repeat this word.
Let me repeat these words.
What is the tidings that comes off of your mouth? Is it a good report or evil report? If you are here. What is your good word?
This morning time, you have come here and what is your news and what is the seat of your.
If you are here. You are a good person.
And how many are able to see that and I was able to prosper all things and wish about things.
I have deliverance in mind. I am free.
I am free now.
I am going to the presence of. I am praying well. I am praying well.
And spirit of God is dealing with me.
I am leading.
And the spirit of God is dealing with me.
I am leading. I have counseling.
He gives me a needed counsel.
I am grateful.
And he blesses the labor of my hands.
He is with me every day. He is a good person.
And he keeps me in the good healing.
How many can tell this? The God of the Lord is speaking.
And the Lord enquires, your good tidings.
You will come.
And so the Lord may say, come, I look.
If you are in the temple. You will see the Lord.
King who moved in the garden of those times and he was moving it right now in our midst and he wants the second one, want to make it perfect.
You will give me a good word.
And he comes and to desires.
You will give me a good word.
He wants to give you a strength.
He wants to deliver you out of your affliction. He wants to answer your shining and rolling pains. He is the Lord who visits you. He is not the Lord who, so worry not. What is his desire? You must be prosper above all things. What is your confession? He is a good person.
And you see, my prosper days have gone away.
Today, I am telling in the name of Jesus. He is a good person. He is a good person.
The life of prosperity have gone away, the same you are going to come first and the life of prosperity was brought out now.
If you believe.
Come and you are believing this now.
You will see.
And your life base of prosperity will be brought out.
The God of the Lord is speaking.
And the Lord desires your healing.
Amen. The minister is speaking.
And today, the Lord decided to give you glad tidings.
Until now, about you, about your children, a bad news may be spread out. You are a bad person.
And you may be vexed in spirit.
We are talking about your children.
And you may feel pain, I tell about my children like this and they told me like this.
The minister is giving you a good word.
And today, from today, the Lord does want to give real good tidings from your mouth.
What is the good? He is asking.
And my aunt's praise were answered.
I will serve the Lord.
And I am a household that serves the Lord.
My children are praying. My children are praying.
And my people are living for the Lord.
My husband is standing for the Lord. My wife is a chief but we are the fruits of the. My children are olive pants. My husband is the one who walks wearing God. How many want this? He is a good person.
And it will be the good tidings.
What is the news?
Oh, the worship. I kept my faith.
How many want such? If you are a bad person. You will not come.
And he was standing and bending knees now in this meeting time and there should not be any evil to pour down some of your mouth.
I am a good person.
I am keeping well.
He is a good person.
And the Lord is caring.
He is a good person.
And the Lord is protecting.
He is a good person.
My God is leading me.
He is a good person.
My God is sufficient.
He is a good person.
And Jesus is sufficient for me.
He is a good person.
And riches given to my Jesus is.
I will serve the Lord.
I will stand for the Lord.
I will serve the Lord.
At the end of my race, I will visit him.
He is a good person.
My redeemer live it.
He is a good person.
And not other eyes.
He is a good person.
My own eyes may behold him.
I will finish my race.
With the good tidings, I will end my race.
Hallelujah, 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 hallelujah. He is a good person. Amen. In the past days and because of the circumstances and situations and I have come first, a bad news. Many people are talking about me.
I am a good person. And my, I, my children have lived and that was said, a good, bad tidings.
He said, you will die.
And lead it, agree and accept, lift up your hands.
I am a good person.
And I have told.
He must forgive me. He is a good person. I am a good person.
And I have told.
He must forgive me.
The Lord must forgive me.
He is a good person. I am a good person.
And I have walked in the manner that others spread bad tidings about me, the Lord must forgive that too.
I will inquire the good tidings of everyone. You will give me a good word.
And take such decisions and the Lord will inquire you of a good tidings every day.
Today.
Here after.
I will speak good tidings.
Till the end of my race and I will speak good.
I will speak only the good news. He will speak.
I will speak about Jesus.
He will tell the goodness the Lord have done to me. The worship.
I will keep my faith.
You will give me a good word.
The end of my race must be end with the good tidings.
He will give me a good word.
The Lord is going to strengthen you.
You will become the good person.
Here after, you will become the good person.
He is a good person. Hallelujah, hallelujah. He is a good person. He is a good person. Amen. If you are talking about this good news and you have a beautiful.
So when you are speaking about this good news and you have a beautiful.
He is a good person.
And it may touch your hearts.
He is a good person.
It may pierce your hearts.
If you are talking about your children.
And those words have pained you about when you tell about your children and you.
He is a good person.
The word of God is not making you.
He is a good person.
The Lord sends a word to set right you.
He is a good person.
Here after, it's not like that all over.
You are a good person.
Lord, you examine me.
You will give me a good word.
And search me and here after the good tidings.
You will give me a good word. You will give me a good word. The minister is giving you a good word.
And take a conclusion and let the Lord keep the anointing to spread the good tidings.
You will not leave.
And please don't depart the.
You will leave.
Lift up your heads.
You will not leave.
And don't go empty now.
You will give me a good word.
Receive the anointing to spread the good tidings and depart the place.
You will give me a good word.
And care after, only the good tidings in your tongue.
He is a good person.
Jesus is coming.
He is a good person.
And Jesus was resurrected.
He will heal me. He will leave me.
And Jesus sent me breathe.
He will share my life.
And he will take me in glory.
I will see him. He is a good person. Hallelujah, hallelujah. He is a good person. Hallelujah. Amen. The minister is giving you a good word. If you are a good person. If you are a good person. He is a good person. He is a good person. He is a good person.